Now we're starting the Goffstown School Board meeting. I'll call this meeting to order at 10:59. If you can all rise to say, "I pledge allegiance, please." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. All right, so before we go on with our agenda, I do need to read the governance order. I'm sorry for those of you that have already heard this from our last meeting, but since it's a new board meeting, we need to read everything again. Consistent with Governor Sununu's Executive Order 2020-04, Emergency Order Number 12, board members will be joined in person and the Zoom conference call for the August 3, 2020, board meeting. The meeting can be viewed on GTV 16 on demand and will also be streamed live on the GTV YouTube. The public notice was posted on July 15, 2020, at the following locations: Bartlett Elementary School, Goffstown High School, Goffstown Town Hall, SAU 19 Central Office, and the SAU Goffstown website under notices. I need to take attendance for this meeting, so when I say your name, just say here. Dan Cludier?
Here.
Ellen Vermakowicz?
Here.
Tim Stetson?
Here.
Janelle O'Brien?
Here.
Jared Talbot?
Present.
Ginny McKinnon?
Here.
Rheda Chaffee?
Here.
And Heather Trepez is here. All votes will be taken by roll call. If you wish to make a public comment, please call 603-766-5646, participant code 685562. You will wait for my instructions and then press 9. Your microphone will be unmuted and you will be directed to state your name and address prior to making your public comment. Try to be clear because this is going into the minutes. We want, we would like to ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less per our policy. We want to be mindful of everyone's time. However, we want to give you a chance to speak. Be respectful. And I think that's it, so I can open up to public comment. Scott, is there anybody?
Yeah, there was a, Mr. Lancaster, I don't know if he wishes to speak, if he would press star 9 if he wants to speak, and then I'll know.
Okay. Do I, he presses star 9.
Correct, he would press it. He presses star 9, and so far, he has not pressed it.
Okay.
I could open up the mic and ask him if he wants to make a comment?
Yeah, why don't you do that, because I don't want to disconnect him if he does want to speak.
Mr. Lancaster, would you wish to make public comment at this time? All right, there's nothing there?
Okay, all right, well, there was an email that was sent to us from an Amy Noringer at 92 Juniper Drive. She wrote, "There has been chatter about hiring separate teachers for remote sessions for MBMS in the high school. Why can a teacher not have a camera broadcast their classroom focusing primarily on them and those that want to do remote Kent? Those who want to go to school Kent? Basically, remote students would log into a live classroom. Also chatter about students moving between classrooms are a concern. Lessen the chance of contact by having just the teachers move between classrooms." And that was all that she wrote. Thank you, Amy. Anybody else, Scott?
Denise said that someone else just sent an email, so...
Okay.
I'm going to, if I may, I'll just read it.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is from Dawn Ryan, 86 Bayam Road, New Boston. "Is there a plan for incoming Mountain View Middle School kids from New Boston to have a chance to go into the school to view it as they were not able to do so at the end of the year? Some have never been there and may not know where to go for classes." And just so you know, that came in under our question line as well, and I did direct that to Principal Pollard to respond to.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. So if there's no other public comment, I will end public comment.
We have one more, hold on.
You do? Okay.
It's a wireless caller, and the mic is open to them, so this is each state their name and address.
Hi, you're on with the Goffstown School Board. Can you state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Morris, and my address is 30 Crosswood Lane.
Okay, Stephanie, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to first thank all of you for gathering. It has been a long night. I've been watching from the beginning. I know there's a lot of information that has been thrown at both boards so far. I do have a little girl who will be going into Glen Lake this year. My concern, primarily, just to be brief, is that the children will not be onsite for more than one day per week, whereas it seems that the older children will be allowed to go onsite more than one day per week. My child doesn't know how to go to school, as she's never gone to school, and I think that it's important to keep the kids onsite who are younger so that way they have the ability to build a foundation and learn how to be on, on school grounds, learn how to function in a classroom, and have more one-on-one support from the teachers and the staff. I think that it's going to be hard to identify children who are struggling educationally when they are mostly remote. And I think it's very important that we, you know, we capture the youngest, of the youngest kids that we have in the school system. And I think that they should, you know, be onsite as much as possible. But other than that, that was really just my main, my main concern, just to keep it brief for you guys.
Thank you, Stephanie, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, bye-bye.
Have a good night. Anyone else, Scott?
That is it.
All right, so I'm going to close public comment. And we already got the FYI of the federal grant. Is there any more with that?
Scott or MC, anything else we wanted to get in the record with respect to grant allocations?
I think the thing is, informationally, that the grant allocations were provided and also that we talked about the fact that it is tied to the general assurances that will now be signed by both the board chair and the superintendent.
Ellen, you had a question?
Well, she just covered my question.
All right, perfect.
We did it in a not-nor meeting.
Right.
But she just put it up there, so.
Yep.
Thank you, MC.
All right, so, going into their reopening plan, Brian?
Well, essentially, what's before the board at this point is if you are in a position that you'd like to take action. Our premise would be that in order to move forward, we need to have a definitive answer of where we anticipate opening. And I do think it's probably worth reiterating that at this point, this would be the plan that we're presenting, and public health circumstances continue to change and evolve. And if circumstances change, so too would our reopening plans. But at this point, I do, I am comfortable with recommending a reopening at all schools in Phase 2, with the exception of Glen Lake, which will be in Phase 1. Once we get those little guys acclimated, we would look to move forward with them as well. I, I think Mrs. Stoyl's plan is a good one. I think all the administrators have done a lot of work. I would like to just emphasize, just based on some of the public comment that we have, we understand that these are difficult decisions and that these are challenges and very real struggles for families. I absolutely, completely understand that this is a real challenge. Concurrent with that, however, we are in an unprecedented global pandemic with an incredible amount of information that is unknown. My recommendation to open purposefully and methodically in Phase 2, and then, again, Glen Lake and Phase 1, and then being able to move on and move to increase students on campus would be our intent. So I recognize that there are many families that this is going to create a hardship for. However, doing so, opening schools, not doing it purposefully, trying to do too much too fast, does have the potential impact of the whole house of cards coming tumbling down and that we end up in a remote environment prematurely. And some school districts may choose to do that, but I think, I'm, I'm confident about our, our plan. I'm confident about our ability to carry it out. There is no guarantee. Opening schools comes with risk. Going to the grocery store comes with risk. Getting together with friends comes with risk. And so at this point, we do believe the argument that was set forth by the American Academy of Pediatrics that keeping kids out of school potentially is more harmful than keeping, than allowing them to come back into schools, provided we could do it safely. So the administrators are still on. If any board members have questions, but at this point, I feel like we've already given our presentation.
Jared had a question.
Yeah, I saved this question for this school board and not bring it to the SAU, because it really doesn't affect New Boston. But as it relates to Glen Lake with Phase 1, we would be looking at not having role model students within Phase 1. What is, and if we do move to Phase 2, I guess the question I have is, what is the process we're going to use to select role models? And I know that those parents that would want to have a role model would be interested in the cost associated with that as well.
Sure. Mrs. Stoyl?
Sure. So we were looking at integrating role models as we're able to in Phase 2. As the board is aware, the, the reason for our preschool program is to provide special education services to children starting at age 3. So with our beginning, we want to get those kids off and running and then bring in others as we are able to. That said, our role model students, as with our, as with all of our students right now, we are not sure how many parents will be wanting to take that option, how many might not be interested. So we would first want to find that out and then, and then bring them in as numbers allow, allow us to, hopefully that works out so that we can bring in the children that want to very soon. But we'll, we may have to do, you know, some sort of a, a roll-in of that. For that procedure, I think that would be something that we would want to develop as we look at the situation and what are the numbers we're really dealing with? How close are we to really being able to make it happen for everybody? We would not charge tuition for role model students for any time that they're not attending.
Go ahead, Jared.
To follow and be more specific, do we have a number of what we would be charging role model students for when they are attending?
Our tuition is the same this year as it was last year. That was the, the last number that the board voted on, which is $150 per month for a three-year-old student attending three days a week and then $200 per month for a four-year-old student attending four days a week.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jared. Does anybody else have a question?
Yeah, I, I did, Heather, Stan.
Yeah, I kept looking to see if you raised your hand.
I, I kind of did. So remind me again, Phase 2, does that give the opportunity for the teachers and the students to opt to a remote learning opportunity?
If, well, students and staff are different. So students in Phase 2 who wanted to opt for remote only would have the ability to do so. Staff, we are evaluating what our needs for remote instruction are and will be, and we would go through a process of identifying which teachers would be in those roles. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Janelle, did you have any questions? I can't see you on here.
I did have a question a little bit earlier. We kind of spent through the SAU, but I think it applies here as well. I'm very curious about special ed, of course, that's, you know, my passion, that's, you know, always trying to, those guys, like, I'm nervous about what this looks out, what this looks like for them. And I was a little bit relieved tonight here that they would be able to have more time in the class, perhaps, than some of their peers. I just wanted to clarify, I guess, with that, like, if it's determined, I know it was sort of, it's determined that they meet the criteria, that they need extra time. I'm assuming that everybody's going to need more time because of the loss of services since April for a lot of students or a change in services for a lot of these students. I guess I'm just curious, are we providing some professional development for our special educators to help them use remote learning a little bit better for some of their students? And, and also, you know, if, if it's determined that these kids need five days a week, if that's a possibility? And, and does that throw off, like, our numbers in our classroom if that kid needs to be in classroom? I'm, I'm just curious how that's all working?
Well, let me take a shot at it, and then if I need to, I can ask a couple colleagues to weigh in as well. I'm going to ask to answer the professional development piece first. I would say our special educators, very consistent with all of our educators, have a need to have time, to have collaboration and professional development around being the best remote teachers that they can be. So I think with our enhanced expectations around teaching and learning in a remote environment, I think that we will all be better prepared and have the capacity to provide a more rigorous platform than perhaps we might have been able to do in March with, without having the experience of having done that before, as well as the PD time. In terms of the time on campus, and I, I might ask Dr. Dallup to weigh in on this as well. I, I support individual decisions being made by the IEP teams. So I think that we have unique circumstances, and I think the special ed teams should have the latitude to make the placement decisions that children and their families and their, their teams feel that they need. One thing, Janelle, that I'm not sure if we emphasized enough, we're going to be putting in place some tutoring and support instructional opportunities before and after school for students who might need some reteaching, some individual instruction, some supplemental instruction. So that's kind of, almost like an optional after-school tutoring-type environment that we built in. MC, can you speak to that, because you wrote this into the grant? And I'd like to just maybe highlight this a little more. So part of the, the federal funds that we have, MC, go, go ahead, please.
So as part of supporting kids relative to social, emotional learning and also academics, content, and skills, we were able to use Title IV money to provide stipends for teachers to work with our kids after school or before school. They can start, our administrators are, this is at the universal level, and our administrators are going to be looking at kids with their teachers. And if we have kids who are having anxiety, having difficulty re-entering, coming back, that we could have a school counselor work with a student. If we have a student that we know has not had the attendance that we would have hoped that they would have had in the last trimester, we can also have a classroom teacher work with one of the students to reteach, pre-teach, kind of boost them up. And these are not necessarily students who are identified. So we have kind of wrapped a safety net around all levels. So this will be available, high school, middle school, elementary schools, and also for our kindergarten students as well.
Jen, I might ask if there's anything that you would add?
Just that I think we recognize that some students have greater challenges with online learning and that we're obligated, actually, to meet with every parent and to make an individual determination for students with IEPs as to what their needs are and what, you know, the best plan is moving forward. We're taking September to really analyze what the needs are and then sort of expand on things, as MC described, once we get into October. So both the state level and, Brian has been very supportive about increasing services for students who have particular struggles. That's sort of top on our list.
And Jen, I would also use the example, because I know I've had some parents contact me, a special education student who might have an immune-compromising set of circumstances that we may need to support them remotely, but in an enhanced way. So really looking at that individualized instruction that kids are going to need, given their own unique circumstances. The Executive Order Number 48 that the, that Governor Sununu signed mandating all of these meetings does sound like an incredible imposition on school districts. And, you know, to think about having hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of students on IEPs and the need to have all those meetings happen within the month of September is an incredible hardship on Jen and her team to pull this off. But as someone who cares about kids, I, I do support the premise of it. The logistics of actually pulling it off, I think, are a challenge, and it might have made more sense to give a little more time as opposed to one month right at the beginning of the school year. But all of the IEP teams will need to deliberate on an individual student basis to look at what are the needs of those kids? And Jen's right, and I, I've been saying this for, for months now. We got to get our most vulnerable kids back in the building as much as we possibly can. So I recognize that kids being out of school is a hardship on everyone, but some of our students with special education needs who have really struggled with changes in expectations and routines and the disruptions, you know, are really, really hard on kids. So I, I know that Jen and her team will do a good job. And, you know, that supplemental tutoring program that MC talked about, this is something that we supported because it's going to be available for all students, whether you have an IEP or you don't. If families want to get their kids into that so they can get some extra help, we want to do it. We're not going to be able to provide transportation to that, so transportation is going to be a bit of a struggle. But for families that might be able to access that, I do think that that'll be another tool. And, and really, we're, we're not through this. We're, we're not even to halftime yet, I, I might argue. And the need to support kids long-term is going to be there. When you get further behind, it takes longer to catch back up. So I think our teachers are going to continue to work really hard. I know our families are supporting as best they're able, but certainly we recognize that some of our most vulnerable children, that this pandemic has created incredible disruption to them.
Brian, one of the things that we built in along with this was the opportunity for teachers to provide these kinds of tutoring opportunities remotely. So a student could go home on the bus and then still be able to be supported remotely. So it doesn't necessarily have to be in person.
Thank you.
Thank you, MC.
Thank you, everyone.
Nate, Tim's hand was up, and then you can go, Dan, after Tim.
Thank you. It's not really even a question, more of just a, an observation. We heard tonight from public comment, it's very obvious that a lot of folks are looking for a jump to Phase 3. Brian, you and I were talking offline, and, and I'm in agreement that if we're going to start this, we're going to start at Phase 2, because I always look at things through a corporate lens, and I see, you know, what's the best work situation, right? So you want a compromise is a situation where no one's going to be happy, but you're still moving forward. And I think Phase 2 is going to be that, and it's going to, if we succeed in that, it's going to give us the opportunity to move to Phase 3. My point, my observation is, you said that extracurriculars, athletics, it's going to start sometime around middle of September, right?
Well, I, I think in terms of athletics, the NHI AA is still evaluating.
Sure.
And their advisory, so the NHI AA does not get to make decisions of what local school districts will make with respect to athletics.
Sure.
They can offer guidance, they can offer recommendations, but that's not their call. It would be their call if they were canceling seasons and that seasons were just not going to be scheduled, there wouldn't be officials, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be an official season. I don't know, Tim, and, and at this point, I can't say...
Well, my point, my point, Brian, not to cut you off, Brian, my point is, I would view it as hypocritical if we were to stay in Phase 2, but then have football games.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
What you're saying is, oh, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, it's totally fine, you get a certain distance. Sanitizing, but after 2:00, go bang around on a football field, totally cool. That is hypocritical. So if we are going to go that route, if in September we do allow sports, even basketball, and I know in your diatribe, it said football's, football's contact, whatever, basketball, you know, I would still consider that contact, hockey, things like that. If we're going to allow sports, we have to, I think that would be a trigger, in my mind. And this isn't something we can address now, we can address this in the future, but it would have to be triggered to move us up to Phase 3, because it would just appear paradoxical to say, these seven hours, you got to follow these rules, but then after that, it all goes out the window. I understand that athletics is the sacred cow in America, but we got to draw on it somewhere with rules. So that's all.
Thank you, Tim. Dan, you had a question or comment?
I, I do have a question. The question is, if someone were to offer a motion to adopt the plan as presented, I need to remind and be reminded that it would also include pushing the start of the school year for students out three days so they would start on September 9. Could you verify that?
Yes, thank you. Does anybody else have a question or comment? Ginny, I saw your hand up before, go ahead.
Excuse me, Brian. The lady's question about if we had remote, if somebody decided to go remote completely. You can't really go into a classroom. That child can't go in and be filmed, because you can't film a classroom of children by law. Is that right?
Yeah, so that, that comment, there's way more to it than just, do we have the technological capacity to put cameras in classrooms and send that link out? We, we do. But I would also say there are likely other implications that would need to be worked out with teachers, with our unions. That, that's a more complicated construct than it may seem.
I just wanted to, like, clarify that that's something that really can't be done that easily. And can we, in fact, film the whole classroom and send it to somebody?
Again, we, we kind of haven't quite gone down this road in its entirety. MC, I'm not sure if you wanted to try to see if you could put your hands on the RSA, but there is an RSA that originally had a very restrictive language that you couldn't, you, precisely what you said, Ginny, you could not film within a classroom. You could film in non-academic settings. So we don't have as many cameras as we have in our schools, including in this room where we all are. We don't have cameras within classrooms. So there are policy implications for that. There are statutory implications in that potentially, you know. But having said that, I think we need to be as creative and open and provide as many... and provide as many opportunities for our kids as we can. So it is, it is complicated on so many, so many levels. So that really would take some more investigation. But the ability to provide, you know, that connection with a student who's not physically with us would certainly be a desire.
I just wanted to give that lady's question a little bit of context. Also, I had a question about the lunch program. It says that all lunches will be pre-ordered. What happens to that little kid that forgets to bring his lunch?
I'm going to defer to Mrs. Bizarro on this one.
Lunches available.
Megan, maybe you could speak to the pre-ordering. And the child who forgets his lunch, we will feed them, Jenny. We will, we will feed him. It may not be a pastrami on rye, it may be something else, but we will, we will certainly feed that kid.
And the other thing is, our plan didn't exactly say, but just for the audience, free and reduced lunch is still available.
Yeah, Meg, you want to speak to these, including free and reduced?
Oh, it did? Okay, I'm sorry.
She's still on?
Meg, did you hear me? Scott, you want to take that, then?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
So she was, Jenny was asking more details about the pre-ordering. I think the pre-ordering, the premise is that it's happening.
Yeah, they'll use the app, the Nutrislice application to do so.
So instead, I was just going to say, instead of, you know, taking that information in as, you know, who wants hot lunch today, that a teacher might fill out a form and send it down to the kitchen, it's going to be done electronically exclusively. And certainly, free and reduced would still be a program. We would support those families, for sure.
And even if they were remote, free and reduced still takes place like we've been doing before. So there's no interruption in that aspect.
Are you set, Jenny? Yeah, okay, great. Ellen, I know you had your hand up, then Jared, then Rhonda. Go ahead, Ellen.
I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and opening cautiously, given the unknowns. We do have space limitations, we do have, we do need to have staffing concerns. I do want to mention, there is no student going to be sitting at their desk for six hours straight anywhere in our school district. And according to the, what we saw this evening, if you're socially distanced, like in a classroom, which is what we're doing with the children, they're not, they don't have to wear a mask in the classroom. They do need to wear them in transitions. It's my understanding from what I read in here. And I took my mask off because of socially distance, I have a Plexiglas thing here. So to that person that was saying that. I like the idea of that priority return aspect of this was really good. I do have a question. Can a teacher who can't come in for health reasons or whatever, can they be zoomed into the classroom and teach the class off the, like, the Promethean Board? And the substitute facilitate what she said, he or she is saying and instructing?
So Ellen, it's interesting that you raised that question. I might ask Wendy to speak to this. This was something that Wendy has put a lot of thought into. So let's say the teacher couldn't physically be on campus. Could we have a support staff or someone else with kids? And then the teacher would zoom in. Wendy, you were one of the first people that I ever heard to float this idea. Do you want to respond to that?
Sure, so we have a couple of different thoughts in mind. Looking at scheduling, we had thought about a teacher next door who's teaching social studies, and maybe another social studies teacher who is out, having a paraprofessional in that room so that we're not sending a Zoom link out of the school for confidentiality reasons, but having a camera on the teacher and going into the next classroom. We also are investigating, since we are going to be taking those Fridays, to be able to create videos ahead of time, that we could have those videos taught by certified professionals, ready to go, to queue up in classrooms, regardless if we have a paraprofessional or a substitute, or perhaps even an administrator, helping to cover classes. So those are two different ideas that we've come up with to help make sure that kids are getting the content that they need.
If I wasn't speaking about, anybody would, nobody would see the kids who are in the room, but the teacher would zoom in. So that would be the only thing that would be zoomed with the teacher, who can speak to the kids, but nobody else is going to see the kids but that teacher and the sub or whatever, or the adults in the room. We were speaking about that a moment ago.
Yeah, I think that could be a possibility.
And that way, those who can't come in are still part of all that as well. That was it.
Are you good?
I'm good.
Thank you, Ellen. Go ahead, Jared.
I was going to say, Ellen, that's a great idea. It sounds very familiar from a few moments ago. That was saying. No, but along that line, if that is a possibility, and I heard from at least two other board members, the safety of our teachers is also paramount. And if that allows a teacher who is fearful for coming in due to health detriment and still giving them the opportunity and the pleasure to teach our students, and that's something that they want to do, I would be fully behind that as an ability for that teacher to zoom in, to teach the students, which could be proctored by either a long-term substitute or somebody else. So there would always be somebody with the students. In addition to that, I would have no problem doing balance transfers to increase our long-term substitute budget line to accommodate that vision of teaching. I think it's something that should be pursued, and I commend Ellen bringing it up, and hopefully other people to talk about it as a possibility.
Thank you, Jared. Rhonda?
Yeah, a couple of points. One of, one of the things in continuation of that idea is to consider how the communication is happening. If you're talking and you can't see your audience, having the right cameras so that you can see everybody and how they're responding. So those are real challenges when you go from Zoom being everybody on the computer to a hybrid format, so a lot to look into. I want to go back to Jenny's question about the ordering of food. And this, it may be happening. I'm just wondering, if it's an app, does everybody have access to an app to get to order food, if that's the only way to order it?
It's not the only way to order it. It had, we have used it before. So if someone, they would be able to call in to food service, there is a confidential line as well. So they can, they can email, call in, or use the app. There's many different ways, and it has worked well for the last four months. So I feel very confident that those who have the need for those food services will get them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda, was that it?
Yep.
Jenny?
If students are not going to have to wear their masks if they're six feet apart, what is exactly going to happen? I'm not being fresh by asking this. But what is going to happen to those masks in the meantime? I mean, I know kids, I'm sure they're not going to be anywhere near clean by the time they pick them up off the floor and, you know, fling them over to their office or something on. That's a concern to me, that I think there needs to be somewhere, if they're going to take them off, like, put them on a regular basis, and not turn them inside out and put them on the table, because you might as well not wear them. So that's a concern for me, that we should have a place, a plastic bag or something, for kids to put them in, because otherwise, by the end of the day, they're going to have filthy masks that are not, that are germ-free from the floor, from the kid next to them, to whatever.
So there's, there's some information that I've seen starting to come out that are tips and recommendations for parents as they think about their kids returning to school. And so that might be a really good thing for us to think about, Jenny, because, you know, whether you have a dedicated pouch in your backpack or you have... I also don't want to give the illusion that it's a free-for-all that masks are coming off, you know, so...
I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah, you know, we definitely, when kids are, when kids are appropriately socially distanced, they should have the chance to take their masks off. And it's appropriate to do so based on the public health guidance that we're being given. So like with a lot of things, I think it's balance. I think it's kids getting used to masks. Parents should be thinking about what kind of mask is going to work for their child. We're not asking for anything more significant than a cloth face covering, which is the recommendations from CDC. So kids don't have to wear any kind of specialized masks, but they should wear something that, from a sensory perspective, that they can tolerate, something that's hopefully comfortable to them, that they're going to be able to wear it. And realistically, unprecedented global pandemic. I know this is a sacrifice, but we all make sacrifices. And unfortunately, this is one that kids and staff are going to have to make.
So is this going to be cooler? Yes, to say sorry.
I was just going to say, if we could give Wendy a, or a couple of...
Raise their hand. Go ahead, Wendy.
Thank you. No, I just had one, the mask conversation and where to put it safely is a conversation we've been having at Mountain View for a little while. We are actually working with our fantastic parent group MVP with purchasing breakaway lanyards that the students will wear around their neck. And it will have almost like a clip on the bottom of it so that students will be able to clip their mask onto their lanyard. And every student will have their own lanyard so that the masks won't be put on dirty desks or, you know, lost in the playground. The students will have a lanyard. And like I said, it's safe because we're getting the breakaways to be able to keep their mask on their person. So it's something that we certainly have been thinking about at the building level.
Thank you, Wendy.
And will the mask takeoff be driven by a teacher?
I certainly want to honor and respect the discretion of the teacher because teachers know what they're going to do next. So if kids are at desks and the teacher is about to transition into a new activity, they might be up, they might be moving, they might be in small groups. So yes, the teachers will absolutely have say in that. And there could be circumstances that kids need to wear masks to protect teachers. And it could be more significant than other classrooms. So I don't want to give the illusion that, in any way, that once you come in, you sit down, you're socially distanced, that it's, you know, your mask is off and that's all there is to it. Because there could be more complicating circumstances. But, you know, obviously, we have to say, this is not a political discussion for us. This is a public health discussion. And the data absolutely supports that masks are effective in protecting all of us.
Frank, did you have a question or a statement? I thought I saw your hand up.
You're all doing a great job.
Well, I saw you waving your hands, I thought you had something else to add, sorry.
Switch after six hours.
Okay, that's fine. All right, Jenny, are you good?
Yes.
All right. So does anybody else have any other questions or comments? I think if we're ready, we should make a motion to do something tonight. Is anybody, I don't see...
I'm willing to.
Dan or Janelle? All right, Ellen, go ahead.
Let's see. I moved that the school board support the opening of school on September 9th. And that we support, excuse me, opening the schools in the manner that it was proposed this evening.
Do you want it to say with the understanding that it can change?
Okay, it's my understanding, it was supposed to change, be reviewed like once a month kind of thing, depending on how it's, that was my understanding of how it was proposed. But with a monthly review and changeability, depending on what the needs and the circumstances are. Is that okay?
I think instead of monthly, anything can happen before school starts.
Yeah, just then.
At least monthly.
I would like to make sure that that part of it is...
At least monthly. Couldn't do it more often.
I think Ellen also meant the monthly change was parents' choice for remote versus hybrid. I think...
Right, that's where I was putting them together.
But I just mean, like, it's not set in stone, that if something changes, September 9th, maybe a whole different plan?
But then...
Subject to change, how's that?
Doesn't a phase system that the plan proposes kind of catch all of that, right? So like Balki said, we can go up to Phase 3, we could go down to Phase 1. I think the plan is the catch-all that allows that flexibility.
As the plan was presented.
Right.
Dan, did you have something you want to say?
I did. It, I don't want to leave it totally open that says something like, and if something changes, administration can just change and do stuff. I think the school board needs to meet again. And that's kind of what I'm trying to get verbiage in on. It should be subject to change, but with school board approval.
School board approval. Denise, you got that?
No.
What did you say, Denise?
I said no. I have here that Ellen motioned the school board support the opening of school on September 9th and that we support opening of schools in the manner that was proposed this evening. And then Ellen, you continued with, with a monthly review and changeability and the need of...
It's coming out.
You wanted to take that out?
Yeah, piece out. Subject to change with approval of the school board.
So Dan, could I just ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So you want me to hang on?
I just want to make sure Denise got that before we change anything.
Subject to change with approval of the school board.
All right. I don't have a second yet, so hang on one second. Go ahead, Tim.
Right, so Dan, just my question. With regards to having school board approval to change the plan some. Let's say, we don't want this, but let's say there's 17,000 new cases of Corona in New Hampshire. So you mean to tell me you would prefer to stay at Phase 2 until the school board could meet again to wind things back down to Phase 1?
It could always be an emergency.
Right, that's an extreme, that's an extreme, but yes. Because we can have an emergency meeting. It could take only five of us to get together and say, you know, let's put the brakes. So I think it's doable.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. All right, so I have a motion from Ellen. Do I have a second? Thirty seconds? Okay. So the motion has been dropped because it hasn't been seconded. So where do we like to go from here? Are you guys not ready to make a decision? Administration needs to start planning for what families need to do. New Boston's got a meeting tomorrow night. Do we need to talk some more? Jared, did you have something you want to say?
It's, it's a comment, I know that a lot of us have already pre-conceived motions coming into the meeting. And again, I want to take and emphasize the work that this committee has done and the administration has done in presenting this information. I don't think my opinion's changed from when I walked in. My opinion is that from our policies, specifically VCAR, which is being a member of the Local Board of Education, what we strive to do and sign off every month. And it says to remember always that my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending the public schools. We know the facts and figures that have occurred. We know the safety risks and the health. I cannot support a plan that does not offer five days a week. I am glad we've thought and talked about having the ability to opt out and remote for those families and individuals, and I hope to say, teachers, that we... And I hope to say teachers that wish to do that. But that's, that's my firm belief. So I would say that I would want to have the option of five days a week of schooling for those parents that wish to have their kids go to school for five days a week. I'm not making a motion. That's just a comment.
No, I, I understand. Brian, do you?
Well, theoretically I would agree with Jared. It's just the logistics. It's how do we keep kids socially distanced? If I'm going to have, if I've got classrooms at Maple Lab that have 24 kids in them, they're smaller than full-size classrooms, I'm going to have 24 or 25 kids with a teacher. There's gonna, there's not appropriate room to space them out. We would not be able to open at full capacity with our current staffing and building space. Moving towards an option that we can get more kids back in for greater durations of time would be my hope. And as I said before, my biggest concern would be the workforce and our ability to have teachers and staff present. I think the board should acknowledge that you received a number of letters from teachers. I can't remember how many, I, I don't know. Some of them went to New Boston, some of them went to Goffstown. I did not see one letter from a teacher that said we should open five days. I think I saw a lot of letters from teachers that said we should open remotely and not even in person. So there, there is a bit of a dichotomy that teachers and the educators who are working with children, remember, a lot, a lot of teachers are in some of the risk categories. I know families want, a lot of families want kids back five days. I know that. And we do too, but I don't have any way of doing that safely.
Go ahead, Brandon.
I, I, I think I was struck by the silence of Obie on this, but it, it made me realize this is a huge, huge decision. It's like, I'm not going to be seconded. However, I, you know, I hear the five days a week and it's like, we can't do that. We, we just can't do that when we're looking at the students, we're looking at the teachers, we're looking. And there's, there's always somebody on the other side that's at risk. And I really feel like the plan that's put, put forward is it's the safest we can do to move forward. It's not ideal for one side or the other, but it's going to get us closer to being able to move into something that's safe because we just, we don't, there's, there's a lot of concern at the higher ed level, at the K-12 level, what's going to happen in the next month? Once everybody's here, once we've got everybody here and something happens, we've got a worse scenario. And we slowly eased it, well, I guess we went pretty quickly from being here and not being here, but it was, I mean, things happened that forced us to make a decision. And I think that going at it from this approach is a little more measured and cautious, but allows us to move into it in a, in a safe way. So short of saying we're going to go completely online remote because we don't want to make a decision, it's too scary. We can move forward because we, a lot of the numbers are in our favor in New Hampshire. But they could change very quickly, especially when you have college kids coming back. So.
So do you want a second?
Well, before we do that.
I think, I think we need to talk just a little bit more because I think it's, I, I think everybody was silent.
Yeah. Janelle, go ahead. I saw your hand up.
Thank you. Obviously this is a humongous decision for all of us to make. I've been struggling with this, I'm sure everyone has all summer. And after hearing something, something really struck me that bothered me tonight. And it was the idea of having them in school for two days a week and then having them in a daycare for three days a week without a skilled teacher who, to help them with their homeworks. It just didn't make sense. Why would you, why is it okay for a daycare to have 24 kids? And it's not okay for us to have 24 kids in a public school? Is there something I'm missing with the law or with the rules? I, I don't know, but it just, that, it struck me so hard because at first I looked at this and I said, you know, that's a good idea, kind of easing into it. I like that. It sounds very well thought out. And it wasn't until I really put two and two together, what are, what are these kids going to do the rest of the time, those three days? I, I, I'm having a hard time thinking that it's going to be rigorous education. Or I know we're doing the best that we can given the circumstances. But I'm very concerned about that, that the kids will be spending more time in a daycare setting than in a school setting. How, how is, it's really bothering me. So I, I wanted to just voice that and, and see if anybody had thoughts or.
Thank you Ginny. Brian, did you want to say something?
Well, one, one thing I would share is there is guidance for childcare settings. Childcare settings are limiting cohort sizes. They're, they're doing many of the same exact things that we're doing on a little different scale. So they are limiting groups, they're not having groups intermingle, their cleaning protocols, they're not allowing the sharing of toys and materials. It's many of the same things. So groupings are limited. They're not doing probably things like contact tracing or anything like that. But what daycares are doing is not dissimilar to what we're doing. And is it ideal for kids to be in a daycare setting? I don't think it is. But I also think that, you know, I recognize that people need to go to work. And, and again, I, I want the board to really understand that we have to have a workforce to do what you're asking them to do. So I, I don't disagree with Jared that we want kids back five days a week. The teachers want kids back five days a week. So one of the ways that you could do that is we would need to hire a lot more teachers to have smaller groups. We could close the high school, make the high school online only. And I could put elementary kids in this building and have way more kids. But I would need a significant increase in our workforce in order to be able to do that.
But is that really fair to the high school kids not to be able to do their socialization and have online learning just so that it doesn't seem fair for one group to be able to do five days a week and the other to do none?
Ginny, respectfully, I think, I think the high schoolers are going to socialize outside of school anyways.
Turn your hand up. All right, Tim. Jared, if you want to let Tim finish.
I yield to Tim to finish the thought if, if I may.
I was going to say after graduation. So I attended the graduation. Wonderful ceremony. By the way, Brandon, I texted you about that. After graduation, I went to DQ in Manchester. I saw Goffstown High School there, right? So we went out of our way. We did baseball then. We did the six feet. We did the masks. They were still there. They're going to socialize. They're going to do that regardless.
But there is some parts of their education that they really need to come to school for and not just do online. There are, I can give you, I don't want to go into it, but there are some things where they need to be in school or the subject that they're taking to really be given adequately or to the best ability. So it doesn't seem fair that they don't get the best education so that everybody else can go five days a week. I, I don't think, I mean, am I the only one? No. But I would like to let Jared.
Yeah. And, and I don't want to think, I, I want to be very clear. I am not saying that it's an all or nothing, that people must go five days a week. Again, I'm just asking that we include that as an option for parents that will have difficulty file, file, finding childcare or being able to take time off from work because we talked about this. They either have to pay more money to put their kids in a daycare. They have to not go to work, which means that they might lose health insurance or they might lose other things that we talked about that affects our teachers. That same thing happens for our parents. So the only statement I was really trying to make is that it should be an option for those members that must go to five days, that we provide that to them. I'm not saying that it's going to be 10%, 15%. I don't know what it is, but until we get those metrics and those numbers, we won't know. And I think that it really needs to be included.
Brian, to say what Jared is talking about, we talked about priority return. Would something like that fall into what he's talking about?
I think a little bit. What, what I just heard Jared say was that parents would have the ability to choose themselves. They get to determine whether they have the ability to come in for five days or not. Again, you're the employer. You have to have a workforce. And if you want us to implement the CDC recommendations, we have to be very careful about how we do that. Jared, we want the same thing. I just think that, again, for the parent who's, who's perhaps up at midnight still watching this, I recognize, I understand this is a hardship, but if we don't do this correctly, it's going to be all remote anyhow. So that, that's my caution to you is if we don't do this properly and I don't have a sufficient workforce to physically be on site and I don't have enough locations, you're exposing us to potential liability for not following recommended public health guidance. And we are potentially jeopardizing having a workforce to be present. And it's just the reality.
Jared, go ahead.
The minimum guidelines that I thought I heard was three feet for social distancing in the class.
So there are, there are different, there are different.
Even from the state.
There are different pieces around it. We're recommending three to six feet with our hope being six. Again, Jared, you go to Bartlett, our classrooms are small. You, you're talking about, in this school, you have 900 to 1100 square foot classrooms. And at Bartlett, you probably have 700 square foot classrooms. So you're talking about putting a lot of kids in a small amount of space with an adult who's not going to be very comfortable with the working conditions that we're creating as the employer.
And can I just interject? I was part of a webinar two weeks ago that was put on through Primex, which is one of our insurance companies. Scott Gross spoke at it. I don't know if you saw it, but they recommend it as close to six feet as you can. Smaller schools may only be able to do three feet because they're smaller. But the more you can distance, the more you can keep everybody safe, the better it is. And that was coming from our insurance company.
If I may follow, but what I heard was the liability piece and the state's at minimum of three feet. So that's the liability piece. I understand what Primax is saying and I understand the risk factors that go into it. But again, if we're going to compare apples to apples, the minimum requirement as set by the state was three feet.
I, I, I have seen six feet. I mean, I haven't read the state, but the bottom line is, I mean, like what everybody's saying, I mean, yeah, Jared, that's our end goal, five days a week. But I have a stack of letters from teachers. They want to teach. They want to be safe. We, if, this is a compromise for everybody. It, it's not going to be the perfect solution for anybody. If we did all remote, that really messes people up. If we do all in school, that messes people up. I think our administration has worked so hard and our staff to try to come up with a balance as a baby step to get kids back in school because ultimately that's where they need to be. But like Brian is saying, we got to protect our staff and we don't want them to say, you know what? I'm not comfortable with what you just approved, so I'm going to go and, and do the, the grant, the leave of absence. And now our pool is smaller. I mean, I've talked to Scott about them trying to figure out how are they going to do this? It's not perfect. And who knows, maybe by November, December, we can go to five days. I, I, nobody knows. And this is just a stepping stone. It's better than doing 100% remote because God forbid we have an outbreak, that's what's going to happen. And it could be longer than three months that we just did. You know, I get what you're saying. I agree with you, but we have to take it in steps and this seems to be the best.
I pulled up the language from the New Hampshire Back to School Guidance if you'd like me to read it. So on page eight, number four at the top, says, "Classrooms should be arranged to minimize close contact, i.e. physical, maximum physical distance between students. "Desks and chairs should be rearranged to avoid students sitting in groups. "Individual chairs and desks should be arranged so that when possible, students are spaced at least three feet apart "with a goal of attempting to get desks and chairs six feet apart. "Six feet apart is a preferred, but may not be achievable, given classroom size and layouts." So.
Where are concurrence?
That's, that's the language from the guidance.
Go ahead Ginny. Um, so anybody watching may not think that we're just trying to protect teachers. We're also trying to protect students. We don't know exactly what this virus does right now. It does something new every week. And students are, are carriers without symptoms. And we don't know if we start having kids three feet apart, they're going to be one foot apart and two feet apart. That's just the way kids work. And we need to make sure that our kids are safe and it's, it's our responsibility to do that. And parents can make choices. I mean, we've given, we've put different scenarios out and parents get to make the choices that work for their family. Other than choices that we have. And hopefully if we start safe and keep their children well, that we can move on to things that work better for them. I mean, we've seen all over the countryside where people have gone in and said, oh, this is fine, our numbers are low, let's open up. And what happened? They're in, they're in big trouble afterwards. It would be really sad for us to have a bunch of sick children because we pushed too quickly. And not just sick teachers, sick children because we did it. We'll never know what would happen and these children may have lifelong illnesses because of it. How sad to do that because we wanted them in the school five days and didn't take the precautions to move on slowly. Thank you Ginny. Does anybody, we need to.
Yeah, Dan, Dan had a comment.
I had Dan.
Yeah, we were talking about possibly having to, you know, open up the high school and bring teachers in. We do not have an appropriation to do that. So that's out. We, we don't have millions of dollars to add teachers. So I can't even consider that.
Thank you, Dan. Alan?
I just want to make one comment. I don't want anyone to think I'm being cavalier about the motion. I have been studying this for weeks and weeks and weeks. I do do the Primex and the NHSBA webinars and studying, I did study the state guidelines and went through the proposal we received on Friday and studied it hard and sent in in-depth questions from the perspective of a teacher, of a parent, of, and myself as a board member. And I don't make this motion lightly. But we do, I think we need to get going. We can't just stay remote. I, I don't, that has negative consequences too for our kids. So I just want to put that out there. I wasn't just hearing it today. I've been studying this for weeks and weeks and reading up on different reports, the, what do you call it? The Pediatric Association, the CDC all say. all say we need to start back, so.
Yeah, I think it's been part of all of our lives for so long.
Ellen, if you put your motion out, I'll second it for a vote. I think that what we can do is, like, I'm not willing to take all responsibility for everybody's health in Goffstown, but I think parents have to really take upon responsibility for them to make, to make decisions for their family. And either they start with the two days or they keep their kids at home, or they do whatever they need to do for, for the five days. But I'm, I'm not real comfortable with kids going back to school, but parents need to at least make, be in a position to make their own decisions. So I'll second your motion if you put it back on the table.
For me?
So that we can vote for a vote.
I just wanna make sure that everybody's had a chance to say what they wanna say, ask questions before we do this. Because once we make the motion, that's it, no more discussion. Everybody good? Go ahead, Jared.
No, and I, I know that people, thanks, thank you to my peers on the board, this has been long. And I don't want you to think that I'm trying to be vilified, I, I know that that's not what you're trying to do. But I sometimes just, we not only hear from the teachers, we hear from the parents. I know the parents have written to superintendent and their chair. We haven't seen all those emails, but I know that they're there. And, and I know that they will hopefully be entered into the minutes if allowed because they are public documents. I am happier that our kids are gonna be going back into a routine and to be able to get that in. I'm not necessarily happy that we aren't offering everything, but I would like to say that I'm interested to see how many priorities are granted and whether it's, you know, gonna be a priority for three days, four days, five days, to see that out and to understand what the priorities that are given to those, those students from those parents' point of view. I do think that this is a decision we need to make today, so I'm glad. I don't think that we're gonna all be 100% on board with the decision, but I think there's gonna be consensus for it, which is the important thing. Just to pick on my good friend, Tim. When, when we talk about, you know, it, it's a lose-lose situation when we have to give up something. It's not necessarily something we wanna strive for when we have to, to kinda think like this sometimes. But we are a group of people, we are the leaders of the school district, and I respect each and every one of you, and I want you to know that for a decision that you think is best for not only our students, but for our teachers and for our community. So I look forward to hearing the motion, the second. I know I'll be voting no on it, just from what we've talked about, but I still support you and our students and our teachers for it.
Thank you, Jared. Appreciate that. Okay. Gone once, gone twice. Okay, Ellen, go ahead, do your motion again.
I move that we start school on September 9th in the manner as proposed this evening.
Do you wanna do the exact same motion?
Yeah, but I, I'm missing the words, they're not coming to me at this point.
Can you redo the same motion?
Subject to change by school board.
It was something, yeah.
That's what you just said.
Denise, you said it then.
Oh, I'm sorry, adopt.
It says, Ellen motion, the school board support the opening of school on September 9th and that we support opening the schools in the manner that it was proposed this evening, subject to change with approval of the school board.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise.
Welcome.
Do I have, do I have a second? By Jenny. So I'm going to do roll call. Dan, include her.
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
No.
Jenny?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
We're, motion passed, we had one negative and one not here. Thank you, guys. That was a lot of work. I know, we got a few more things, but, you know, good talk. Okay, so moving on, we need to do the board authorization request. Okay, so Jared, since you didn't like the wording in the first one, how about you do it?
Yes, ma'am. To grant continued authorization to the superintendent under temporary regulation, a board motion is needed to approve for COVID-19, for temporary regulation to policy E B C F. Emergencies, I'm sorry, pandemic epidemic emergencies and to grant the superintendent or his designee authorization to respond at his or her discretion to change public health circumstances and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adapt school policy as needed until the next successful school board meeting. Second.
Second by Tim. Okay, and do a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Okay, we're unanimous, Denise. Okay, we need the, the second one. We needed a motion to grant continued authorization to the business administrator to pay bills. Yes?
I was just wondering if we could let the administration go home, it's pretty late, unless we needed them.
Oh my gosh.
I think you're wrapping up. We are, we are.
We're almost done, Janelle.
We have two more messages.
I got gas in the tank, I can keep going.
All right, so Jared, you made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Tim, roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
We're unanimous. Just two quick things under other business. I have a tentative schedule of our school board meetings for our next school year. So I'm gonna have Denise send it out if we're good, that our next school board meeting for the school year will be on August 31st. It's right before school starts, we can get any updates. If you guys are good with that, I'll have Denise send out the tentative schedule for the year. And we'll decide, you know, hopefully be here, maybe still do Zoom and...
What time?
Uh, we'll, we can maybe discuss that at August 31st meeting. So I think that's it, so just thank you all for...
Was there a meeting on the 31st?
Meeting on August 31st.
What time?
7:00. And once we figure out the logistics, I'll let you guys know. And thank you all for getting your S A U email set up. All correspondence from here out will only be sent to S A U emails. So make sure if you have any other problems with anything, let Stephen know. All right. If no one else has anything else to say, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So Dan? Okay, Dan won't do it, somebody else will.
Okay, so Tim motion, Jared second, do a roll call. Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna? Oh, she's not here, sorry. Janelle?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, thank you to...